Okay.
No one's on, okay. I'd like to call the Bradley Beach Planning Board meeting of February 11 to order. Will everyone please rise for our pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag.
This special meeting of the Bradley Beach Planning Board is now called to order. This time I would ask everyone to please sign off cell phones and other devices as they are distracting the others. If there's a lot of background noise at your location, please move to a quiet area. All participants should keep their devices muted until you are called to. This will allow for a clear and concise recording of these proceedings. The 48 hour notice as required under the Open Public Meetings Act has been met. As noticed this right as this special virtual meeting was emailed on February 3rd, 2021, published in the Esberry Park Press, The Coaster and The Coaster. A copy has been placed on the Bolton Board in the Borough Office and a copy is compiled with the Borough Clerk. Chair Shuck.
Here.
Mr. Albanaires excuse this evening, Mayor Fox.
Here.
Mr. Mulcahy. Oh, you're muted.
Base bar, just hit the space.
I got you. Um, Mr. Gubatose? No. Uh, Mr. Rosenfall.
Here.
Mr. John.
Here.
Mr. Marco.
Yeah.
Mr. Maynor.
Here.
And Mr. Advento.
Here.
Okay. Um, also President Monica Weltski, Attorney to the Board, Gerald Frida, Board Engineer, and Christine Bell are Board Planner. Um, can Monica, can you swear in Mr. Mulcahy is our class two for a one year term?
Of course. I don't have his pledge present, hold on, now I gotta look for it. Sorry. Mr. Mulcahy, had you been here last month, I would have had it, I promise.
I apologize.
I can do it, Monica.
Yeah, you know what, Kristy, if you can, because otherwise I have to search through my emails. I'm really sorry, I didn't realize we hadn't sworn him in last, last meeting off the top.
Mr. Mulcahy, could you raise your red hand, please? I state your name.
I, Michael Mulcahy.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the State of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the same and to the governments established.
To the same and to the governments established.
In the United States and in this state.
In the United States and in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially and justly perform.
Impartially and justly perform.
All the duties of the office.
All the duties of the office.
As a Class Two member.
As a Class Two member.
Of the Borough Bradley Beach Planning Board.
Of the Borough Bradley Beach Planning Board.
For a one year term.
For a one year term.
Expiring December 31st, 2021.
Expiring December 31st, 2021.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Mulcahy, welcome to the board.
Thank you, thanks for having me.
Good, sorry about that, but you know, the lawyers never read above the applications pending.
Okay. All right, uh, next up is the Consistency Determination of Ordinance 2021 dash 01, uh, otherwise also known as 450 dash four terminology and definitions. Just to give everyone on the board a little background on this. As I stated, I don't know if everybody heard, I was involved with this since around March of last year. We also had, uh, Councilman Gubatose. We had a professional plan, not a planner, but an architect that was working with us. A contractor that's involved with the town. He was involved with these definitions working with us. We also had a resident of Bradley Beach who is also a, uh, which we call a real estate agent. So we had, you know, professionals and everything before this went to the mayor and council. It was sent to the attorney, uh, I'm sorry, it was sent to the, uh, uh, which we call our engineer, as well as our professional planner, Christine Bell. They reviewed it. Made, made, uh, I think you guys made a little tweak on it.
Chair, Chair Shuck, Chair Shuck, if I can just cut to the chase, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Based on your involvement with the, with the pre-planning committee and your involvement in making recommendations, Mr. Chair Shuck is going to be recusing himself this evening for the purposes of the discussion. So with regard to the consistency determination of the ordinances, the ordinance was provided to the Borough Council. The Borough Council has approved on a first run ordinance number 2021 dash 01. So now it comes before this board for purposes of our consistency determination. So our Board Planner has provided a letter dated February 5th of 2021, recognizing that the definitions were provided to clarify certain aspects of the land development ordinance and section of, uh, main subpart, section 450 dash four, to be exact. So the board at this time has the duty to determine whether said recommendations are consistent with the master plan. So you have a recommendation from our planner that said definitions are consistent. And if you have any specific instances in the ordinance or in the definitions that you would like to point out, Mayor Fox is also not able to participate fully this evening as a member of the council who, who actually voted on them the first time. So he and Mr. Shuck are out and Councilman Gubatose is not present this evening. So we have all five of you, so we need to go through the five of you to determine whether or not this ordinance is consistent. So, uh, that being said, does anybody have any comments on the ordinance as proposed?
I, I read it and I have a couple of comments to specifics. So, um, how do you want to approach this? What's the best way to approach this? Do you want to, are we going to go through it page by page and say, does anybody have any comments on this page? Or how do you want to go through it?
We can certainly, we can certainly do that, that's, you know, that's fine. So the first page is just the recitals.
Right.
The second page begins the definitions under 450 dash four, and obviously they're in alphabetical order. So looking at the first page, does anybody have any, any recommendations or comments with regard to the first page of definitions? Ending in the word addition.
I don't.
Addition?
Okay.
Should we include volume along with floor area and height of the building or structure?
Okay, hold on.
Which one was that?
Addition.
Item two, under, under addition item two.
Okay, so that's a recommendation, should volume be included?
Yeah.
Also, maybe under the alteration as well, the second from the last. Alteration, what's the second page, I'm sorry, I'm jumping.
Yeah, don't go to the second page, we're only on additions number one and two.
Okay.
Okay, so should volume be included? So that's certainly an issue, you know, that you can bring to their attention because you're not sure whether or not that's consistent. Okay, and going to page two, starting with administrative officer, moving through the, the definition for association. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns, or things you'd like to point out for purposes of consistency?
I just had a question about the apartment. If owned individually, the building common area facilities shall be owned by owners on proportional and undivided bias? If that's a condo, how do we, how does? I mean, how, that they make their own bylaws?
Put, I'll put condominium association may conflict with this language, how's that sound?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know, somebody else, I don't know if that will conflict or not.
You're not, yeah, you're not going to be able to find the answers because these are just definitions. So all you're doing is bringing a potential inconsistency with regard to the master plan. So I will put your questions in as recommendations to explore.
Yeah.
On the, on volume under alterations as well, the list sentence.
Okay, anything else for page two? All right, moving to page three, starting with the word awning, ending in the definition of the word building. Are there any suggestions or questions?
Me.
Who's me?
What from, I don't have a.
Okay, so I thought somebody said me, okay.
I had a question.
Yep.
Under baffle, should we include air as well as?
Well, I, yeah, put sound waves, I saw that combustion. I will put, I will put that in.
Okay.
Um, I, a question on bed and breakfast. Does an owner always have to live in the premises to be, to have a bed and breakfast? Question.
I will put that in there.
I believe that the definition of a bed and breakfast is that the owner is on the premises.
Is it?
Okay, I'm pretty sure.
Makes sense.
Oh, we can just put that in there so they can be cross referenced for purposes of consistency. Okay, so on this.
And also on, under bedroom? I mean, I don't know how many railroad apartments we have in Bradley Beach, but, um, railroad apartments consider center rooms as a room. And here it says, if you have access going to one bedroom to another to a bathroom, how does that work? Is that an issue or not?
All right. Room versus bedroom. Okay. That's it, all right.
And guys, remember, um, these definitions, if there's something that creates an issue, then it's a variance and it comes to the board. So you can't expect these definitions to cover every possible situation. Just remember that as we're going through it.
Okay.
Understood.
And next page from where it says building non-conforming all the way through bulk regulations, are there any comments?
I do. Um, would, there is a duplicate of that very term. Building not conforming and the following paragraph are repeated twice on this page. So I would take it off at the top. If you look below, below the term building line, it repeats.
Okay.
So.
Building non-conforming.
I delete the one at the top of the page.
Okay.
I had a question, I'm not, I just, what it means on the building area? Steps that hi, if somebody could find, give me what it means. Steps height less than the highest first finished floor.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, this was discussed at quite a length. The issue is, and we don't really have any that I know of in Bradley Beach, there may be, but if you had a split level home, uh, if you're familiar with that type of construction, there's actually two different levels of the first floor. So, um, we wanted to be clear that it was the lowest finished floor level.
Oh.
Okay.
And that's why you see that language in there.
Okay.
It's a little awkward, but it, but it covers what we need.
Yeah. That, that explains it to me.
Okay, good.
Cool.
I had a, I had a question under bulk regulations. Do we need to define what floor area ratio is? It's not shown as a.
They're probably defined under a table, I would think, right, Jerry?
Um, I thought it was in here, but I think we decided not, we're not going with floor area ratio. It's not going to be, uh, part of our, of our, um, purview. So I'm going to be included, we're not using that as a, as a zoning device. Floor, floor area ratio, and maybe Christine could give a better explanation of that. Is, is a way to, I guess, to control certain development in size. And in Bradley Beach, we're not really a municipality that faces those types of issues. But Christine, maybe, could you weigh in on that, are you here?
Sorry, took me a minute to unmute myself. Yeah, so, um, floor area ratio is basically, you could have an entire, you could have a one-story building, um, that covers an entire lot. And that could have a similar floor area ratio to, you know, a three or four-story building that only covers a portion of a lot. So I think probably just, you know, I wasn't involved in that decision-making process, but given, uh, the types of development opportunities in Bradley Beach, I guess, the committee and the council felt it wasn't something, uh, a regulation that really needed to be used.
The term is under bulk regulations, should it be taken out then? Because we're not going to.
No, it, it doesn't hurt anything, it's just there.
It is, um, like a development and a planning term, um, a D, there is a D variance. If you exceed a far, that is, you know, regulated for a particular area in those cases. So it is in the municipal land use law. So I think that if there is a definition for it, um, it probably doesn't hurt to keep it there in the future if the borough decides to put in that type of regulation.
Thank you.
Anything else for this particular page? Okay, moving forward, the next page, which starts with cellar and ends with contiguous.
I have a question. I'd like to raise a question, and I was looking at the term condominium association. And my question is, should we include a definition for condominium? As a term? Um, after all, I see the rest of the ordinance defines apartments, townhouse. A number of specific dwellings are defined, and, um, I've, I think it seems to me not defining condominium as distinct from apartment. You know, Mark raised a question earlier. You know, they are distinct in terms of ownership and equity. And it just seems to me that not defining condominium is conspicuous in its absence.
I'll put that in there, should a definition for condominium be included? Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure, I think the, the group thought that this was the definition for condominium. So.
Well.
Monica, can I speak? No. You've recused yourself, can't speak. Okay.
I, I would just say that I see apartment was defined earlier. And, um, I've sat through several, um, applications before the board where I felt that there was a certain confusion between, you know, condominiums and apartments are distinct properties. They have similarities, but they have distinctions, particularly in terms of rights of ownership and equity, and certainly in terms of perception in, 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 in the town. And it just seems to me it's conspicuous in its absence, not to define condominium here. We've defined so many other types of dwellings. I was the one, bed and breakfast, um, you know, apartment, that sort of thing. It just strikes me as conspicuous in its absence.
Yeah, I, I will definitely put it in there, should, should a definition for condominium be included? But, you know, I also just want you to keep in mind that, you know, zoning and the legal definition, they, they, they're provided for different purposes. So a condominium is defined by a master deed. There are, you know, regulation, there are state statutes that define, you know, condominium ownership and what must be done. However, if you were looking at it from a, from a zoning or land use perspective, you really don't, you're not focused on the type of ownership so much as you are of the number of units and the density and the dwelling units, and whether or not it meets the zoning definition. So I'll put it in there for purposes of your question, but I'm just telling you that, you know, with regard to the definition for zoning purposes, it really doesn't have, uh, it doesn't really matter because it's defined by the type of use.
Well, that's duly noted, I would just, as a board member, um, I have noticed before, there's a certain fuzziness, you know, between apartments and condominiums, which I think if putting a definition here, which is readily available, would certainly complete this. This would make this ordinance a more complete ordinance.
Yeah, no, I put it, I put it in there, I'm just thinking that's probably why it was overlooked, you know? But definitely in there.
I'm here, you're in, suggest it, go in. Thank you.
Yeah, it's in there. All right, so moving on to the next page, cornice through density gross residential. Are there any comments? No. Okay, seeing no comments on that one, let's move to the next page. Density net residential all the way through drainage.
I had a question on the development.
Okay.
I don't think we're going to be doing any mining here, right?
You never know. I don't know.
Just saying.
You know, maybe there's gold under the tracks, I have no idea.
Yeah, but it's probably in somebody's teeth.
Again, it's just the standard part of, of the work, of the, of the process, that's all it is.
It's boilerplate, in other words.
Yeah.
Okay, I just, uh, thought that was a little odd.
Yeah. You know, they, they, they may, they may find, I don't know, equate mining to a drilling operation for who knows? The F boilerplate is fine. All right.
So, I, I, also on that, I'm still not 10% understand, I understand it. So it's a division of parcel or land. What if you're not, if, if you're not dividing a parcel? And you're just developing that one lot? That's still development, right? It says delant into two or more parcels.
Yeah, but it's all separated by commas, so they're making a list of all of the items that qualify as development.
Okay.
Or any, or any other structure or land or extension or use of land.
So it's, it's starting the combination, then breaking everything down.
Got it, okay.
Okay. Anything else on that page? Nope. Okay, moving forward, next page, driveway through the word escrow. No? Okay, seeing no comments on that, moving forward. Essential services through frontage. Nope, seeing no comment on that, moving forward. Garage private all the way through land. Seeing no questions on that, next page, land disturbance through lot. Okay. Next page, lot corner through lot line. Next page, lot line front through means of ingress and egress.
There's a lot of.
Under a different ordinance. All right, next page, medicinal cannabis retail establishment through ordinance. Okay. Next page, outdoor living area through permitted use. Next page, pervious surface through prohibited use. Next page, projections through right of way line. Next page, rooming house through sign pre-existing non-conforming.
I have a question here.
Okay.
Under site. Um, I, my question is triangular shaped portion of land. Uh, various of these other definitions are very specific, you know, where they say a basement is seven foot height. My question is, is there a New Jersey specification or verbiage that goes to the minimum size or dimension of a side triangle?
There is, DOT has standards, uh, which our police department has adopted. And, um, all this definition is, is to make somebody aware that it, it could be needed on an application.
All right.
Okay, that's all this is. But there are standards, and they're based on speed, uh, the width, the road, that type of thing.
So, my, my, so if I could just pursue this a little longer, because I, I've sat through at least one issue on this board where site, uh, where site triangle was part of the discussion. And, um, specific to Main Street. And having that dimension, have, having that specification, um, I think could proactively, uh, you know, prevent some issues from being, uh, you know, it was just basically steer the committee. So if you have the specifications in other areas, uh, is there a good reason why we would not put specifications? What is a side triangle here?
Well, the specifications are, are in a different location, and you really can't because every situation's different. You know, the intersection of Second Avenue and Main Street is different from the intersection of, you know, Fletcher Lake Avenue and, uh, Park Place. So everything has to be looked at, it's a function of the speed of the road, the width of the road. There's also accident, uh, population at that area data that they have. So you can't really give a general thing where you say, at some such a location, this is what we need, this is what we need. You also have site triangles that could be necessary mid-block if we have a development that has a driveway mid-block. That's also something that would have, that has to be looked at. And if it has anything to do with Main Street, uh, it's a state highway and they got to get DOT approval. So that burden becomes even more of a burden for the applicant.
Right, right.
And I think because, um, you know, in reviewing proposed side triangles and things like that, Jerry in the engineer's office uses standards set forth by the DOT. You don't want, we don't want to have a set standard in that definition, and then DOT updates their standards, and we have to revise the ordinance definition.
All right, all right. I just want to make sure that if there was a minimum size, if there was universal New Jersey, accepted minimum size constituting a minimum side triangle, my question would be, would that not, you know, would that not help the intention of this ordinance to include that here?
Yeah, there's, there's no minimum sizes given that I'm aware of.
Okay, I'm certainly aware that, you know, each, each side triangle has its own particular, has its own specificity, but there's, there was a minimum.
Right, that's right.
If there was a minimum, that would, that would certainly be, um, you know, good guidance. So that was my question.
So moving on, uh, next page, site plan through story. Hearing nothing, next page, story half through structure. Moving on to the next page, subdivision through temporary use. Moving on to the next page, trailer through window sign permanent. Sorry, nothing, okay.
Then include, uh, food preparation and sale also?
Which, I'm sorry, which one?
Trailer.
Well, that's a good point.
The only habit, uh, the.
Well, you know what, I will put that in.
Do they allow food trailers in town? I mean, besides food trucks? I mean, permanent, right? Would you offend it, I'm sure? Is it, this would be more permanent, right?
Well, that's interesting, but, so I'm saying, I'll, I'll put it in because that's a good question. Maybe somebody didn't consider that. So that can be a consistency issue.
And sometimes the trailers, like, they can be found on a construction site, you know, for nine months, that type of thing. So, so this covers a broad set of circumstances.
I, I have a question, okay, in Avon, they had a, um, they had a boat, pulled a boat in one of the lots there for about a summer or two, where they sold fish out of, um, food, fish food?
Yeah, right, I remember that.
Is that, what's, what does that come under?
Well, I mean, in that, if that were the case, and I'm not the zoning officer, Mike is, he could probably tell you better. But you probably would require the applicant to go to the board for something like that, that's pretty exceptional. Uh, you know? And I'm sure that, and that, that was. And I'm sure that, and that, that was the case in Avon. I know the site you're talking about, actually.
Yeah.
They lasted a couple summers and then that was it.
No, it was kind of, it was too bad, it was kind of neat.
There was.
But, yeah, but, I mean, if somebody, could somebody even do that in town?
Well, I mean, the town does it themselves. Sometimes on a boardwalk in the summer, you have trailers that, that, you know, sell.
Right.
Uh, merchandise or food to people at the beach, so.
Right.
Mr. Mulcahy, did you have something you wanted to add to that?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, we actually did have an applica, not an application. Somebody, uh, called recently and wanted to have a truck that made coffee and wanted to, they didn't have an exact address. They wanted to find a place they could park where people could drive through and get drive-through coffee. And it was too, it was too, the.
Wait, we lost you.
Even at ten, I said, well, I need an address and you'd need a lot more than that. And then he realized there was going to be a lot of, he's like, ah, just forget it. So I think it would be along the same lines that they would need a mercantile license. You'd have to get a zoning permit and the health department would have to be involved as well.
All right. All right, moving on to the next page, um, everything window sign temporary through zoning envelope. Seeing nothing on that. The last page, the definitions for zoning officer through zoning schedule, bulk regulations. It says, see attachment number one, but I didn't get an attachment for bulk, uh, bulk regulations on my ordinance. Any questions? Okay. So just going through the consistency issues were raised, um, with regard to the word addition. Should volume be included? Apartment condominium association may conflict with the definition. Alteration, should the volume be included as well? Baffle, should this include air discharge? Bed and breakfast, does it have to be owner occupied, occupied and is as part of the definition? Bedroom, the railroad apartment is a room versus a bedroom, would that be a potential issue? Uh, building non-conforming repeats twice on the same page. Bulk regulations, will this include the floor area ratio or how is that addressed? Should a definition for condominium be included? And the trailer, would this include, which does this or should this definition include food prep and sales? Are there any other issues for consistency, uh, questions going back to the council? Okay. Christine, um, since there are no further issues, you would, you would stand by your testimony in your letter, um, of February 5th, indicating that the ordinance proposed was consistent with the master plan for the borough of Bradley Beach?
I do. Um, one of the, uh, recommendations of the 2018 master plan was to review the definition of all terms in accordance for internal consistency with land use regulations and to update outdated terminology. And this ordinance is doing that.
Excellent. Does the board have any questions or would someone like to come forth and make a motion?
What motion would you like?
Well, do you want to approve the ordinances for purposes of consistency with regard to the, um, suggestions that I've just referenced based on your comments?
Yes.
Thank you.
I second.
Okay, I'm sorry, who was my second? Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Adventer.
Yes.
Okay, Mr. John.
Me?
Doug, Doug, junk.
I didn't hear. The audio didn't, the, the audio fell at the wrong moment, but yes.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayner?
Yes.
Mr. Marco?
Yes.
Mr. Mulcahy?
Yes.
And Mr. Rosenthal?
Yes.
Lovely, thank you, everybody.
That was good, very good.
So.
Well done with all those 26 pages.
Yes. Moving forward, the next scheduled meeting will be our regular meeting on Thursday, February 25th, 2021 at 6:30 PM, which will also take place via Zoom. So if anybody, if any money, member of the public is present, please check our website for any updates regarding the meeting location and/or meeting access as the links, meeting passwords and meeting IDs will change for each meeting that is held via Zoom. Having no further business before the board, we, uh, would request that a motion be offered, uh, by a member of the board for adjournment?
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
You can't make a motion. You're accused, there you go, we're gonna.
The second.
And Doug is fine. The meeting is closed at 7:08 PM. Everybody have a lovely evening, thank you so much.
Take care.
Good night, everyone.
Thank you, everybody.